All right. Good evening. I call to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, September 5th, 2019. It's 6:00 PM. We're at Carabelle City Hall. I will ask Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer and then we will set a pledge of allegiance to the flag. So all please stand. Good day.
Our God and Father in heaven, we're so grateful that we have this time tonight to come together and talk about the things of our wonderful city that you put us in charge of. I ask you to be with us in our judgments and wisdom that we might do that which would be proper and fair and right for our community. We ask this in Jesus' name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening, and I'll ask you, like I do every meeting, to please speak into the microphones, and especially when you come up to speak at the podium, make sure you speak in the microphone. We'll move on to the consent agenda now. It's, um, we would need to approve the August 1st, 2019, regular meeting minutes and the attorney's invoices that were circulated today.
I move to approve.
All right. And do we have the second?
One second.
Okay. That's a motion by Commissioner Melander and a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. All right, it's time for our public comment. Is there any public comment? We have quite a few people in here tonight, and we want to make sure everyone gets an opportunity for public comment. All right, there being no public comment, we will move to the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Allen, do you have reports, sir?
One little thing here. I'd like to thank the mayor for bringing the matter to my attention about my alleged membership relationship with the Franklin County Housing Authority at our last meeting. It really caught me by surprise, and it certainly proper and appropriate to bring issues like that to public attention. The facts are, I had attended two meetings, only two meetings, six years ago when the office was over on St. George Road. I think they were looking for a board member, but I've never heard any more about it. I've never attended another meeting there or at their new location in East Pointe, and never heard any more about it. I began to search the files, and to my surprise, I found that I was listed as an ex officio member, whatever that is, and sometimes as a board member. And I discussed this with Mr. Flip Butler, and I hope this resolves the issue. But once again, let me thank you for the due diligence in bringing that to our attention. We do have to place ourselves and our city charter on ethics and command. Thank you.
And thank you for your report, Commissioner Allen. And I hope you do get it straight with the Community Development Land Trust because they are representing themselves even on articles of organization on the state sun biz site, you know, so showing you as, you know, part of their.
Right. I looked at several documents in Congress, and they're in all of them, and so I think we're straining that out.
Okay, I'm so glad.
They're going to cancel that.
And they're working, they're even working with the county to, you know, try to get land to, for developing housing, and we want, you know, we want them to be representing themselves properly.
You're right to bring it up. I appreciate it.
All right, then, is there anything else, sir?
There's nothing else.
Okay. Commissioner Mathis?
I have Mathis.
Okay. Commissioner Walden?
I have Mathis.
All right. Commissioner Melander?
Yes, ma'am. I have one thing I just want to bring to the, I just want to mention, and for the board's benefit and information, and for Courtney, I've had several calls about some concerns with the cemetery and improvements and needed repairs. On the backside, or the wooded side, north side of the old part of the cemetery, there's a wooden barrier, or we call them seawalls when they're along with water, but there's a wooden barrier built up there, and it's deteriorated, and it's caused, it's about caused some severe erosion to come down on some graves that are on the north side of it. So we may have to address that issue fairly soon. And that's something we may have to get Dustin to look at and see what we can about correcting that issue. And the other calls I got is on general just upkeep. There's nothing wrong with what our crews are doing, but there's, people are asking about improvements and upgrading, which we touched a little bit on in our budget meetings about upgrading the cemetery. So I just wanted to let everybody know that there are people looking at it, and they do have some concerns.
Very good.
Just wanted to inform the board.
And I hope you informed the folks that have been speaking to you about it that we have budgeted $15,000 for upgrades.
I didn't get too deep into it because we haven't approved all of it.
No, but hopefully, you know, we can, we haven't done upgrades to the cemeteries, and I can't remember. I wouldn't know. So is there anything else, sir?
That's all. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. All right, then, I have a report. I just, I just want to report, too, that residents near Tilly Miller Park are expressing daily complaints regarding long-term vandalism and ongoing late-night gatherings by juveniles. Security lights have been installed as part of the FERDAP grant there very recently. Courtney just took care of that, like in pronto, in a week, within a week, there around the pavilion, and floods are going to, floodlights are going to be placed around the gazebo, and Courtney's working on getting some security fencing that's included in our FERDAP grant put around areas as quick as she can. And possibly that grant will find some new metal doors for the restrooms and locks and some perforated security screen over the windows. So, you know, we just want to let the public know, too, that we're, we're working on that issue as well. And then Michael Marrone, County Coordinator, called me to follow up on Commissioner Lockley's request that both cities pay a $7,000 fee to continue the same level of animal control services as has been provided in the past. And yes, that's to continue the same level of control of service. Commissioner Lockley reports that the county can no longer fund animal control officers on the beaches and in both cities, and that the cities need to have some skin in the game is the message that was sent by Mr. Marrone.
I attended the meeting, and that's pretty much basic work procedure.
Okay. And so the county attorney as well has advised county staff that the county's not required to provide animal control services to the two cities in Franklin County. They've requested law enforcement to accompany the animal control officer in every call because the calls generally involve citizens fighting amongst themselves, or there's an actual fighting incident. I asked Mr. Marrone if the sheriff's deputies accompany calls, accompany the animal control calls in the unincorporated areas of the county, and if the continued service that we would pay for would be complaint-driven, or would we have ongoing patrolling for animals at large. Mr. Marrone didn't have an answer for either of those, and he'll find out. He did say that the part-time service are both cities at the same time. He'll be on-call for both cities. And Mr. Marrone is currently working with, trying to work out a payment plan with the Appalachia City Manager, and he'll, he'll call me to follow up, and I'll let y'all know, or Courtney, so she can report to you. And I want to thank all the department heads for attending and participating in our budget workshop. Mr. Painter was very helpful with the development of the water and sewer budget, and especially, you know, after we, we conducted year-to-date budget reviews quarterly this past year, so it made it, it made it fairly easy to put together the budget. And just to let you know that Fire Chief Carl Whaley went ahead and approved the installation of the generator at the firehouse, so Charlie is overseeing installation now of that surplus generator. And in addition, I thank all the department heads again for participating in Hurricane Preparedness Briefings. It was an excellent exercise and refresher for all of us, and it really should be done each year. The briefings were well organized, and we had helpful input by all the attendees. All departments worked together. They wanted to work together to assure the security and safety of our citizens and our city's assets. Top priorities were, as they were when Michael came, public safety, water and sewer service continuation, clear and safe roadways, fire control, open lines of communication, which were established by the administrator with the EOC and the SERC team manager. In the event, we had to open a point of distribution. One item of interest, the policy was established that for the safety of city employees, they would not answer calls during winds higher than 45 miles an hour. County Commissioner Bert Bolt, who is here, called to advise me that Duke Energy is staging work crews at the Kendrick Park Sports Complex parking lot. So if you all see that out there, that's, that's what's happening. Coordination with the Food Pantry Volunteers at the Carabelle United Methodist Church was established for first response distribution of MREs and water. These volunteers have secured sufficient emergency supplies to bridge the gap between the actual time of a disaster until the time the state is able to, to deliver bulk emergency commodities. This undertaking, in partnership with the Carabelle United Methodist Church and the First United Methodist Church of Appalachia Cola, now takes a huge burden off the city of Carabelle. And I'm very grateful for their kind offer to serve our city. And that's all I have, and we'll move on then to the city attorney's report.
Just have two quick items. The first is, and we'll get it to Russell and Courtney for execution, appropriate commissioner, is that we've received back the approved Summer Camp Utility Study memorandum agreement with St. Joe finally, so that's ready to move forward. And then just agreement to the commission's intention, as far as Little Custom Homes, I sent them a letter on August 15th identifying number of events of default under the terms of the lease, and which they have 30 days to cure or risk eviction proceedings. So that's, time's ticking now. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Does, do you all have any questions for, for Mr. Hartman? All right, then, we'll move on to the city administrator report.
We've been getting lots of complaints about people driving down on McKissick Beach and driving around the turtle's nest. Back before Hurricane Michael, there was some posts up, and then it got washed away. And I'm going to have the road department go and put those back, just to keep them from driving up on the beach. And that's really all I have to report on.
I have a question about the posts. Correct me if I've been misinformed, but I was informed that those were put up by private individuals and were on private property.
They're all the lease property, but they were put up by private individuals, and we're getting requests to put them back.
I don't have, I don't have an issue with putting them back. I just want to be sure that we're not on private property.
That is part of the lease property.
Okay.
I think the homeowners who put them out before, in the area.
Is there any other discussion, any other questions, ongoing items? Okay, the city administrator has a lot on the plate right now. We have a lot going on behind the scenes. You all wouldn't believe it, but, anyway. Okay. Ms. Keisha, the city clerk report.
We need to schedule some meetings. We're going to need a special meeting in September for the second reading we passed after first reading of 474.
I think we probably, probably should wait on that until, like, after we get on through this, this meeting and see what, what happens in this meeting.
Okay.
You know, we'll do that at the end after we have, do have the actual reading of the first, the first ordinance.
Okay. And we also need a workshop for 199, the animal ordinance.
We were going to do that in October.
Yes. So I just listed some dates. I sent them to Ms. Keisha and the bench she needed to look, but I was looking at October the 7th, 8th, 10th, or 11th during business hours, to be started and completed during business hours. Not all those days won now, but it might take that many workshops.
I'm new for the 7th.
Okay.
The 10th.
All right. Jennifer?
Whatever.
Okay, whatever. And you, sir?
I'll try to work it out.
All right. We want you to attend.
Well, I'm.
Controversial, but we were.
As long as they're during the day, I'm okay.
And how about you, Commissioner Walden?
I'm fine with it.
Okay, so I'm fine with any of them, so.
Let's do, let's do the 8th, that way.
All right.
It's hard to do them on Mondays, that way we.
Yes. Okay. 8th is on Tuesday. Then the time.
Do you all want morning or afternoon?
2:00.
2:00, 1:30, whatever. 2:00, do you think we could get done in 2, 2 hours?
I know it. If not, we'll have to schedule.
Okay. All right. Is 2:00 all right with you all? Okay, so then I'll request a motion from someone, please, to schedule a workshop for review and amendment suggestions to ordinance 199 on September the 8th at 2:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to that.
I'll second.
Okay, so that motion is by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries.
And we're calling this a workshop?
Yes, that would be good to have a workshop. And then Dan had requested at our last meeting to have the P&amp;Z Board review that ordinance 199. Is that correct? Do you still want them to review that animal control ordinance?
You know what? To save everybody time, maybe we do our workshop, and then you can certainly recommend sending anything to them, but you're basically doing their work, their workshops.
Okay.
And it's not really a P&amp;Z issue.
Okay. And that's, that's fine with me. I just wanted to, if, if we're going to have them have a meeting, I want to give them as much notice as, as we can, so we won't confirm that at this point. All right.
Is that Mathis, I'll say?
Yes, Melander and Mathis, and Carrie Mathis. Then Mr. Russell Large is not here yet, but we will bring him in as soon as he arrives. He's on his way, and he has a good report for us. So we'll move right on into the advisory board reports, and that would be Ms. Tamra Allen with the waterfront partnership.
I think you've all received a copy of our report, and I'll just hit a couple of highlights. Like to remind you that the International Coastal Cleanup is going to be on September 21st in the morning, starting at 8:30 to 11:30, and we are, the Carabelle group is meeting at the pavilion on Marine Street. So we've got water and naps and t-shirts and all the good things that we do to get our, get our garbage up off the, out of the border and out the streets. And we really would appreciate you promoting this amongst your friends and, and getting us a lot of people out there. That's going to be a fairly busy day for some of us in Carabelle because it's the same day that the, it's the Smithsonian Day at the museums in Carabelle. All three museums are going to be having special programs. It's, I think, the 15th year that this is happening in Carabelle, and every year it gets better and better. And they're having special dedication, the building at Kipford Johnston, having special events at the Lighthouse Museum. And at our museum, at the Carabelle History Museum, we're having a number of special events. And one of them is a, several different rooms of music, the theme this year is music, a year of music. So we have pulled together some amazing records. There are a lot of people around that still have records in their possession, and we pulled them together from back in the 20s and 30s and 50s and 60s and all around of those old times, so people can come by and enjoy hearing some of those and see some of the new displays and exhibits that we all three have in our museums. And we just wanted to thank the city for the completion of the repair to the Coast Guard dock from the hurricane, that people are being very complimentary, and appreciate the fact that it's now repaired and is usable by everybody, and the wheelchair dock is fixed and, and everything. So we really appreciate that. And I did have one special thing about the museum that I wanted to tell you, and that we had 129 visitors to the museum in the month of August, but what was more important to us is we crossed over the number of, we've had, now had over 10,000 visitors to the museum. So we're kind of proud of that and hope that'll, it just keeps going straight up every year, so we're hopeful that it'll continue to be a good attraction for the city of Carabelle. Any questions?
Do you have anything for Ms. Tamra?
Thank you so much.
And I just want to comment on one of your, our items is that you commandeered the trophies out of the old city hall building.
Oh, I did, yes, yes.
I'm so happy. I didn't know you, you were doing that, and I'm glad. And it says you have new trophy cases, so.
We can't, well, we, they're not new in life. They're new to us, new trophy cases, new to us. We found a matching one that matched the one we already had, so we're actually going to be switching rooms around at the museum, probably, I'm not sure we'll get it done by Christmas, but first of the year, we're going to swap over and move the family room into the office, the office and the family room, so there'll be a lot more room for trophies and high school-related memorabilia. And we have been working on what that looks like, not just to just line them up like little soldiers, but to try to make exhibits about them as well. And we've been very fortunate to have a young lady that has been volunteering with us and helping to organize them and clean them, because they've been sitting in that room over at the old city hall there for quite a number of years. And so that's going very well, and we're trying to figure out which ones are the most important ones, and you might have memorabilia that went with them, either photographs or letter sweaters or other things. So we, so far we've gotten a bumper sticker, and so we're hopeful that we'll get, we don't have very much about the mullets. All those years that the school had the mullets for mascot, we have one, well, we have two things. One thing that's specifically about the mullets, and we need some more. So we're hopeful that we can put that out in the community, and people will dig out their old mullet memorabilia. And we got a lot of Panthers and a few little Green Devils, but don't have any mullets. And they were proud when they were the mullets, so.
I think, I think we've got some Green Devils over at Tilly Miller Park.
Yeah, well, those aren't exactly the kind of.
I haven't looked at two of them.
But I now have another thing I want to say. I want you to go ahead and, and start making arrangements to get that mural-style painting out at the cafeteria, and is that all right?
Yes.
For you all to hang upstairs at the museum.
Yes, ma'am. We got that under control.
All right. Very good. Okay. Thank you. And then, Mr. Large, we'll go ahead with the advisory board reports and then come back to you, give you an opportunity to settle in. Welcome. We're glad you're here. All right. So the Economic Development Council, then, we have Mr. Caden Barber with us tonight, so happy to see you. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Caden Barber. I've recently been appointed to chairman of the Economic Development Council of the city of Carabelle. I manage the Carabelle Boat Club, Attorney Hartman's a member that we have, and I'm an active and licensed community association manager and a licensed active real estate agent. Really, we're, we're pretty new into this. We had our first two meetings here recently, over the course of a month and a half, two months. A lot of smart people on the board. We got Commissioner Tony, Lisa Mudson, Ms. Tamra Allen, Angela Webster, who's really, really smart, and we're just trying to get as much done as we can. So far, Ms. Lisa's tried to get some pamphlets going for just to promote economic development in Carabelle, and going off of some models that she had looked at from Lockulla County, and also the World Smallest Police Station that we were looking at doing to try to promote economic development for Carabelle. Ms. Tamra brought up something that we're looking into right now, the Stan Mayfield Work and Waterfunds Program within the Florida Communities Trust for the purpose of creating commercial seafood harvest, harvesting facilities for future consideration. She did some digging on that, and it's quite the process, come to find out, but, you know, one of the biggest things, Ms. Jalen pointed out, they've had the Economic Development Council before, not much got done, so our goal is to do as much as possible. We were going to meet quarterly. We went from that agenda to meeting month to month, called a special meeting two days ago, September 4th. So just a lot of smart people. Angela Webster is also really interested in childcare, or like a after-school program, some kind of childcare for the city of Carabelle. So I've asked her to report back to us for our next regular meeting, and kind of pick her brain what she has, and see what we can do to help out this community.
All right. Very good. I appreciate you being here to report on that and stepping up to the plate to be chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Tony wants to say.
Mayor, I'd just like to say that I really appreciate Caden Teffer. He's doing an excellent job. The EDC is, is just kind of getting reignited, and we're starting to get organized and crawl, and we're making progress, as he described, and I'm very pleased and thankful that you're taking command of it. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
I subscribe to that, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Very good. Okay, we'll see you next time. Thank you. And stay around a while. We've got a couple of interesting items coming up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have the Carabelle Aviation Advisory Board now, Mr. Tim Sullivan.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I think it's really great to see a young man take a little trip in that.
Agreed, yes.
We've been having a problem, but we talked about last month with the fuel system. We decided to just go ahead and replace it. Courtney and I contacted FDOT, and they have decided to help us fund it, to pay 80% of it, which frees up some money for some equipment we need out there. So in the meantime, we've got a part, we're going to get, use $235 to get the fuel system running, because it'll be a long process to get the, the project through, through FDOT, but they've committed to it.
That's wonderful. So, well, the city was going to match a little bit.
20%.
Uh-huh. And it was a $21,000 project to upgrade that fuel system, and it's.
And it will have reliability, which is really important, that we haven't had since the fuel system's been out there, really. So as soon as we get, we get it up and running, then we can start letting everybody know that now we've got a good reliable system.
And the Triumph Amplification, they're still, they're still working on that?
Yeah, they said they have the draft ready. They're just waiting for the final estimates on the, on the cost for the, for the structure that we're looking to put out there.
Okay.
And he said we should have that draft, I think, by the end of, sometime next week.
Well, we thank you, thank you for your volunteer services, well, sir.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Do you all have anything to say?
Just one, thank you.
All right. Glad we didn't have to evacuate. I'm sure you all were just, okay. And then we're going to move on to the Carabelle Human Resources Committee. We have Mr. Tom Magnan.
Very good. Thank you. Very good. Thank you, Tim. Evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Just have a brief report today on a meeting that was held with the Krizna Group, who responded to our advertisement specifications package. And Tony, Courtney and I met with them in Courtney's office on August 19th via the phone, a telephone meeting with Mr. William Krizna of the Krizna, the Krizna Group, is that what that is?
It is.
Yeah, Krizna Group. So, and what we really did was we used the, the document that we used in the advertisement, numbered 1 to 7, to see if the proposal that the Krizna Group submitted to the city met all the criteria of those seven items. And we really questioned them just on number one, which was, does everybody have a copy of that? of that?
We have.
Oh, you don't have a copy of it, okay, well.
I do have a copy, I see, I think you do.
I can go over.
I have a copy of it.
I can go over, I'm talking about a copy of the advertisement specification package documents, but I can, I can go over it. Number one concerned having an audit of the policies and the practices of the employee policy manual, and the question to the Chrisna Group was, you know, when they do that audit, will they be able to tell us which policies are in that manual that are not being followed or no longer needed? And are there any practices that are being part of the employment picture but not in the policy book? And he responded that he would be able to give us that information. So part of the examination of the policy manual is to see that it's up to date and that everything in that policy manual is relevant to what's happening right now. And number two, which concerned wage and salary comparisons with other like-sized cities, was not in their proposal, and we talked to Mr. Chrisna about that, and he asked if we would like to have a separate proposal for that, for that purpose, and we said yes. And indeed, that same day, he did send a proposal to Courtney, but we, we did have a chance to talk to him about that. It was a rather detailed proposal, of course, it added some cost to his, to what would be the fee to hire them as the HR consultant firm. Number three, which involved labor laws, a number of labor laws, we thought was covered in the proposal. Number four, which was really about, I'm going to forget what number four was, am I notes here?
One, two, three. Labor law training.
Oh, the training for the, labor law training for the, for the department heads in the city, and indeed, that was addressed in his report. The next concerned confidentiality of the documents in employee files. Number six was to audit the personnel policy, the personnel records of the employees, and he had covered that in his proposal. And number seven was more problematic, I think, what because somehow it didn't get into the advertisement number seven. That really was asking if we could have one-to-one meetings with commissioners, perhaps department heads and other employees, and Mr. Chrisna stated that if, if there was time, by the time that his, his person was here auditing the records, that we would be able to do that, you know, so. And then, you know, I, I think that that, number seven of that policy should be, should be kind of reviewed by the, by the commission to see what the meaning of number seven is, because we had some difficulty kind of defining what it said, so. So, you know, all in all, we didn't come to any conclusions about it except that, with the exception of number two, he had covered everything in the, in his proposal. Number seven needed some clarification and, and, you know, the cost, we didn't deal with cost, we just dealt with, you know, what was in, what was in his proposal. The, we have another firm that has, that has sent in a proposal, Evergreen, Evergreen Consultants, is that what they're called?
Evergreen Solutions.
Solutions, Evergreen Solutions, okay. And I think we'll, Courtney will schedule a similar type meeting in the, in, you know, in the near future, I would think, is that correct, Courtney?
Yes.
Okay, so, and that's, that's really all, all I have tonight, is that, just a record of that, that meeting, so.
That's very good, I appreciate your detailed report, and all commissioners do too, I'm sure. I, I wanted to say one thing, though, a couple of things, but regarding, you know, addressing the Chrisna Group in particular, I don't think that, you know, there's a lot of things we need to discuss about that proposal, and this isn't really the time to do that. I think we should wait until you all re-interview or to talk with the Evergreen Solution folks and let Mr. Magnin make his report, and then we possibly schedule ourselves a workshop to review those in depth, so. Yes, sir.
I agree with what you just said there. One more clarification that we came across, and correct me if I'm wrong, Courtney and Tom, but what I understood was in his proposal, in their proposal, not that particular one, was to, was including that they would meet and train with all key staff and supervisors. They had not included to meet with each employee and commissioner individually. They said they'd never had to run across that, is that right, Tom?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
But they didn't include in their proposal to meet with all key staff and supervisors and train, not just meet with them, but train.
But he did agree to meet with the commissioners and not every employee, but the commissioners if time allowed.
Right, if necessary, that's correct.
He said though, time allowed, because they would only, we don't really need to get into all the gory details, but they would only be here one day.
Right, that's correct.
Well, I think they said one or two days, he might be here, so.
Written reports said one day.
And I agree with you, we don't need to get that deep into it, but just for clarification, I think that was what we were asking for, and what basically Tom said, that we need to do.
And, and, you know, so somehow, we did make, we had a unanimous approval of a motion on, on June 6th, where we would add a number seven to the specifications package and it would read that the HR consultant would consult on a one-on-one basis with the employees and commissioners on a one-time basis. And that didn't make it into the, to the specifications package because of a misinterpretation. And I'm ready to go ahead and make a motion, I have it worded here and I've studied the wording and studied the wording and I just don't, it's a long motion, and I don't know how it could be misinterpreted. And I would, I'm motioning, I'm making a motion, which I don't do too often, and I have it written, to add a number seven to the list of items included in the HR specification package that reads, during the audit process, the professional HR consultant will consult one-on-one with employees and all commission members on a one-time basis. For HR firm proposals previously submitted, a one-on-one, one-time consultation with employees and commission members will be included as an additional term to the previously submitted proposals. So that's a motion by Mayor La Paz, and let's see if we can get a second.
I'll second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mayor La Paz, a second by Commissioner Mastis, is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I, I agree with us going there, Mayor, and not just my opinion, but coming from some of the professionals, the one-on-one with each employee and the commissioners individually is a little bit too much. Key staff, the mayor, key staff and all supervisors, they represent all the employees, and the board members, I don't necessarily need to meet with them one-on-one, I think we'll get all the information we need through staff, that's just my opinion. But that's just my opinion, I think that we're asking for a little bit too much with the one-on-one with each employee and every commissioner.
It would, it would, you know, it doesn't have to be, if each employee doesn't want to go, they don't have to, they don't have to.
But they're going to process that way.
Yes, I understand that.
That's the reason why I would suggest is just to stay with key staff and the mayor.
Well, we can, I'll certainly modify that to one-on-one with department heads, advisory, supervisory department heads, including.
And that's what he was saying with supervisory personnel.
Administrator and the chief of police and the streets and roads supervisor and the water and sewer department supervisor, do we have another one?
I wouldn't use an individually, but that was included, and my thought process is definitely they're included.
You know, we have a lot of unwritten policies and, you know, we need to bring those to light, to make sure they're included in the personnel policy or at least audited, and we want to make sure they're brought, those unwritten policies are brought to light. And certainly, the team member that's on this board, Commissioner Melander, might, you know, want to meet too, so that we don't have a one-sided point of view as well, you know, to make it more fair. So, that's, is there any other discussion?
Are you going to modify the motion?
Yes.
The motion, that's the question I had.
Yes, I have modified the motion to, for, to include.
I'll modify my statement.
Okay, and that's to include the supervisors, department heads, the mayor and the team member, or the commission member that's also HR team member.
If you'll please send me that part.
Okay, I will, and then I'll have to, you want me to include the, all of the people that I named as well, the department heads, okay. All right, so we're ready to go, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries.
Do you have a question for Mr. Tom?
Okay.
Maybe it's a little bit late, thank you, Mr. Tom, for your reference, and is that kind of in line with what we were discussing?
Yeah, I think so, and I mean, even though that number seven did not appear on the advertisement specification package, I did have a copy of that.
That's right.
Motion, so we did question.
We did question.
Mr. Curtis about that, and I think that's where that information comes from, that that may be just a little bit too much to ask, you know, because that's what he was saying, so we got it from, at least from that proposal, we got it right from the boss's mouth that they considered that a little bit too.
And we're all in a learning process here.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Tom. Okay, thank you very much.
All right, so that is that, and now we're going to go reverse and call Mr. Russell Large to report, we're glad you're here, sir.
Thanks. Thank you, glad to be here. For our DOT Small Communities Outreach Project, this is the Hill Project, Southeast Fifth Street from Avenue F to US 98 and Southeast Avenue D from Third to Ninth. Just giving you a heads up on the schedule for that project right now, we would like to look ahead for a public meeting in November of this year, and then we proceed with design in the meantime, permitting in January 2020, beginning construction in March 2020 and completion of construction in October 2020. For our Lighthouse Estates project, right now we're waiting for, there's two agreements, there's an, there's an agreement between DEP and the Water Management District that has not occurred yet, hasn't been executed yet, and then there's be a second agreement between the Water Management District and the City of Caribou. So DEP has not finalized their agreement with the Water Management District yet. Talked with Christina Cogurt today with the Water Management District, and she's going to let us know when that agreement is, is to be expected. I did receive an email at 5:45 today from the Water Management District, and they're requesting a meeting with Courtney and I on September the 18th. Actually, DEP is requesting this meeting, so in my discussion with Christina today, I think that might be technical in nature, not certain, but wanted to make you aware they've requested a meeting for September the 18th. Okay, on the water side of that project, this would be for phase one and two. We did submit the request for inclusion to DEP last month, and it was approved, we received the notice today from Paul Brandl at DEP. So I need to digest that information a little bit more, there's some financial information that we would need to provide. Right now, the DEP SRF program looks very favorable, they have a principal forgiveness program, and for Caribou, the way they work their calculation, that's about, it's almost 80%, it's 79.57% principal forgiveness, so that's very strong. Their interest rate is about a little bit more than half a point less than rural development would be, so, so right now that, that looks like a good deal for funding. Let's see. Oh, at the last meeting, yeah, there was a question about tap fees being included in this, in that cost, and I talked with Paul Brandl about that, tap fees would not be included, in their eyes, that's a cost borne by the customer, but as, as a practical matter, if the project is being funded to construct the taps, there's really no, it's really not necessary to charge a customer a tap fee if they connect while the project is constructed. So that would be my recommendation, is that we would not charge customers a tap fee who connect while the project's under construction. Lastly, I understand there may be some movement on the St. Joe feasibility study, and we're just ready to begin that scope as soon as that, a moment of understanding is provided by St. Joe. And I'll be having to answer any questions.
Okay, I have a question, on the, you know, this email from Paul Brandl, I mean, I got it so late, it was, I guess, it was forwarded to me or something, it must have been. But I may be wrong, but it doesn't look like they're funding the entire project, just, it looks like they're funding planning and engineering.
Yes, that's correct. So it's, it's a, it's a two-step process, so they want us to go through the planning and the design first, and through that process, we'll refine the design, basically the design will be final, and then we would update the cost estimate that we've, that we've already produced at this point, which is conceptual in nature, so after the design, it will be more final, and then, and then apply for the, the construction loan. And the construction loan, that's, that's the part that would be close to 80%.
Eighty percent.
Principal forgiveness, right?
This one is like 50%.
Fifty, yes.
Okay.
Russell, about tap fees, will the city incur any cost in cookups? You said that maybe no tap fees if they hook up during construction. I don't know what all that cookup entails, I'm not Charlie Payner, but is the city going to incur any cost in that cookup?
No, it's just part of the construction project, which I would.
So their, this construction project's going to include the meters and everything?
Yes.
Okay, they're, they're just not saying they're going to pay the city tap fees.
Right.
Okay, that's cool, that's good.
That's what I'm hoping.
Yes, all right, so.
That's right.
Part customer.
Yes, but we want the folks to have their meters and their connections and valves and pipes and things, yes.
Everything that's necessary for that private individual to hook up to it, just as they would.
Turn on the faucet.
So that's the septic abatement as well?
That's right.
Okay, all right, then, okay, very good. Do you think that we'll need to have a little water grade study?
I, I don't.
Okay, well, we can, we can get with Charlie and get a calculator.
Okay.
Well, good.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, that's good news. Do y'all have anything else? Okay, do y'all want to, well, let's see, we got everything, y'all want to take a break before we move on to Oliver? I don't know what that was, but. We've got all our advisory boards and staff reports, and it's time to go to new business, and we have a presentation here, and we may have to review a purchase sales agreement. Do we want to take a break before we, we get into that, or do y'all want to press forward?
I'd just say press forward.
Okay. All right, is everybody ready then? We'll just keep moving forward? Okay, then, I know Mr. Shear is ready to move forward, so we have, and Mr. Shear wants to speak to you later. Item one, under new business, discussion and possible action regarding. Item 1, under new business, discussion and possible action regarding presentation of purchase sales agreement for former City Hall site for McDowell Housing Partners. And this is Mr. Christopher Shear, and then he'll just.
Maybe shorten up. So. Good evening, thank you for this opportunity, happy to be here. First of all, I wanted to say I'm very embarrassed by the fact that my presentation says Collier County. Unintentional, and not a good start, right? So my apologies there, but thank you for having given me this opportunity. We've, just give you a little context, McDowell Housing Partners. Just by way of background, my name's Chris Shear, I'm the Managing Director of McDowell Housing Partners, which is a subsidiary affiliate company of McDowell Properties. McDowell Properties has been around for about 15 years, started on the West Coast of, in San Francisco, and has now six offices across the country, primarily in investment development, are investment development, multifamily market rate developments. They have done the mass of about 40,000 units across the country. I joined them just in February of this year to start focus on affordable and workforce housing, which is my area of expertise. I've been developing within the state of Florida using the Logan Housing Tax Credit Program and other soft subsidies that are available through Florida Housing Finance Corporation since 2008. Before that, I was in the Midwest doing similar roles, but I've been working in Florida since 2008. Since then, I've developed about 2,500 units that I've been fully responsible for orchestrating development really from start to finish. McDowell has developed and owned directly about 2,500, 2,400 units in the state, and we have not owned anything particularly here in Franklin County or in the Panhandle, so we are making, this is a bit of a move for us. I'm located in the Miami area, but we are, you know, able to communicate, and we operate at a high level, so there's ways to get things done. We have a good contractor who we've worked with on a number of projects, and they do have subcontractor base here as well. So that's really the key to making sure that these developments can proceed efficiently, is that you have the right team in place on the ground to physically complete the construction. My role is really more on the front end in terms of acquiring the sites, you know, initial design, entitlements, financial underwriting. Next slide, please. So, if you're not aware, we are currently active in Carrabelle. We were lucky enough to receive an award of about $5 million from Florida Housing Finance Corporation earlier this year. We are proceeding with a 50-unit, single-family home rental community on the former, the Jordan Bayou Developments, the defunct subdivision on Airport Road, and that project should be, we should close under financing and have some shovels in the ground within the mid-quarter, mid-first quarter of 2020. It is a process, you know, we're working with a number of different lenders and state agencies. To get that development, we did have to apply through competitive solicitation for funding, which is what we're proposing to do with the City Hall site. Since I've been working here, you know, we've studied the market, we've done our market study, we think Carrabelle is kind of an untapped market. We're seeing that, you know, its proximity geographically to Tallahassee and Panama City provides a real opportunity for growth here, and we think that this development, and Jordan Bayou as well, will provide some economic catalyst and kind of spur the economic development side, and it seems like, you know, there's a lot going on on the economic development front as well, so be happy to, you know, try to assist in bringing in not only construction jobs, but bring in permanent jobs and, you know, to bring in new residents from outside of the community in all likelihood, so I think it's population growth. So I do think it's an opportunity to consider. The process that we go through in the state is lengthy. Unfortunately, we submitted an application, we do not know if we're going to receive funding for three, four, sometimes five months thereafter, and then it's a process from there to underwrite the development, all of our design entitlements, architecture, engineering, and ultimately commence construction, which is another, in this case, would be about an eight-month process. So we can move as fast as we can, and I think we can get, you know, to a shovel in the ground on the former City Hall site if we're successful in securing the financing by the end of 2020. This is just a conceptual site plan. We have a few different renditions of this that we're looking at. This is not certainly set in stone, but the idea here is that we provide a community clubhouse, standalone community clubhouse. Amenities would include a swimming pool, as well as a top lot playground area, potentially a dog park, or some walking trails in the wooded area. That's the rear of the site. We did determine that there is no wetlands there, so we do have more flexibility to utilize that portion of the site. So that's all open concept. I like to work holistically, so we will look at working with the city to try to find a good use for the development, try to put in place an efficient site plan that really adds value and provides a true asset to the community. The next slide, please. So this is our standard interior finishes. If you saw the developments, you would, you would think that they, you know, that they look like market rate developments. That's the upside of the program, is the quality of the product itself is very high standard. We have, you know, a number of construction features and amenities that we commit to with our application and our financing that are requirements, and we execute covenants to ensure that those requirements are met. That goes along with property management as well. So we have a lot of, a lot of hooks in us. Get hooked. We have a lot of hooks in us that ensure that we continue to operate the property at a very high level, including maintenance of facilities, including, you know, screening of tenants. So we are, we're excited, we think this is an opportunity. The current funding solicitation that we're looking at, it's due October 9th, so there's not a lot of time. Pretty straightforward application, we can pull it together in time. There is certainly some consideration, you know, with the existing building demolition costs came back this week at about $250,000 to raise the building, and that number could jump substantially if there is asbestos in the building, and I'm suspecting that there is some level of asbestos in the facility. So we are, you know, we're eager to kind of get that diligence done, to figure out, you know, that the price is not going to be prohibitive for us to move forward, but we do think that it provides a benefit and solves a problem for the city as well to remove a, an otherwise, you know, lighted site that I don't think has, is well-suited to be repurposed and redeveloped. I think the vacant land is certainly going to be worth more than the building itself. So, you know, sorry, I ramble a little bit, but feel free to ask any questions, let me know if there's anything in particular that you would like to see within this project, and we'll be back at all.
Well, I have a quick question about your $250,000 cost to demolish and do away with the building. Do you have an official bid from a contractor?
Yes, we do. It's not, we don't have an official bid in writing, but we have a call from a contractor that works with the city that is a site contractor, Crowder, I believe it is?
Crowder.
Crowder, and that's the number he gave us.
Well, I did a little bit of research myself, and I also talked to a contractor which wasn't Crowder, and it's not an official bid, but it's a discussion, and their cost is substantial to less than that.
Can you give me his name?
And that's not including any asbestos evasion, and that's just a ballpark.
Yeah, our goal is to, you know, to minimize the cost, because that's a cost of the development, and I can only support so much cost with the financing and the sources that I have in place. So this is just an initial blush of pricing. We will go to the market and solicit formal bids and multiple bids.
Well, the only thing I'm trying to imply there is not favoring any contractor, but you may get a much better pricing than just the one.
Yeah, absolutely. We solicit multiple bids for nearly everything, so.
And I'm sure you do, especially at that cost, but that's a consideration.
Yeah, I was taking advantage of it, yeah.
I will comment on that, because, you know, we did a lot of research before we decided to leave that site. We researched from 2014 until we finally decided to make the move, which was when you came on board in late 2017. And Courtney did back in April, she contacted Mr. Crowder back in, on April the 7th, 2016, which he gave a similar cost, basically 250 to demo the site. And then, and the board had agreed for both of us to reach out to two different companies, so I contacted Cross Environmental Services and Crystal City. They tore down the old Oaks Motel over there in Oaklacknee Bay. I got their contact from the building, we'll call it Building Department. And I talked with a Mr. James Smith, and this was back in April of 2016 as well, and he definitely said, you know, they can't do anything, they can't disturb anything without an asbestos survey, and that, you know, he can't, if everything was clean, there were no environmental issues, it would run about 275,000 to 300. And the reason why is that Franklin County, Florida, has the highest tipping fees of any county in the state of Florida, and he said that about 150,000 of that would be tipping fees. So that's, that's the cost there, $45 a ton back in 2016, I don't know what it is now, and, you know, they estimated the tons, so. And he said back in '76, all the schools were mandated to have an asbestos survey, and that that'd be updated every three years, but I think we contacted this school and they couldn't.
How many were?
No, so they didn't. And so that's, that's what we have, I think we did, we did do some research. Wakala's $28 a pound, a ton back in 2016, and, you know, there was some consideration to trucking it all the way over to the land.
I tried to catch up with what information there was to show that the city had acquired before I came on board, but I didn't reach out that far. I reached out to some local contractors, and again, they were not ready to give a bid at that point, because hadn't asked for a bid, official bid, but they did some estimating, they didn't come, they didn't come close to 250, and that was with carrying it to our landfill. Now, they projected, they did go far enough to project the size of the building and the number of loads that it would go to the landfill. They did consider that, but that's not a detailed quote, there's more to it than just that.
Yeah, we'd be happy to follow up with that as well, say we can.
That'd be a consideration in us negotiating back and forth with you possibly.
Understood.
One sec.
Yeah, I think that's fair. That's fair, we can dig into that further.
Okay. So I just wanted to kind of touch on Florida Housing Finance Corporation. They have developed this special Hurricane Michael rental loan recovery program, and it can be seen and studied online under their site, and it's going to fund developments, new developments like this located in the 11 Hurricane Michael impacted counties, which includes Franklin. And there's a way it reads, there's a one loan program award per county, and then if funding still remains, there's a, they put aside 50 million, is that right?
There's currently 50 million, that number could go up, it won't go down.
Okay, so, but after, after each county gets awarded a project, up to 30 units, then they'll start back around, they'll start back with Fay County, and, you know, to see if Fay County needs another funding for a project. So, you know, I feel like if we don't try to work with the McDowell Housing Partners now, and try to go ahead and get this application submitted by October the 9th, then we will, we will lose our turn if someone else is going to get the money. It's for new construction only, demolition of current structures are allowed, rehabilitation is not allowed. So, you know, we're fortunate on that, because we know that loans and grants have so many different caveats that makes it sometimes difficult to qualify for. If you all, do you all want to go through the, now the proposal, we worked with Mr. Shear and Mr. Hartman, and Courtney and I worked with Mr. Shear yesterday on a conference call and revised the proposal somewhat. Did you all get a chance to look at that?
I didn't, it's pretty straightforward. I can go through the details so everybody knows what we're looking at.
And we also have our appraisal at the last minute here, and I can go through the results of that. Again, all pretty straightforward, is the offer we have on the table right now, purchase and sale contract, is $50,000 for the site, $2,000 deposit, and as Mr. Shear was just talking about, there is this period of time on the front end to see whether they qualify for the funding, and do all the planning, and I guess the asbestos survey, and determining whether it financially makes sense. But there is a 180-day feasibility period from the effective date of the contract, so six months, and the purpose of that six months is for them to get their ducks in a row and determine whether or not they want to proceed with the purchase at $50,000. The contract also provides for three extensions of the contract, each a 45-day extension, that they would purchase those extensions for an additional deposit of $2,500 each, for each 45-day extension if they need them. The contract would be assignable to the entity that was getting the funding, basically affiliate that was getting the funding through Ford Housing. This talk of an asbestos survey, we would be the ones to conduct and order the survey, and they would be the ones to tell us, hey, go ahead and get that started. When they do that, they would put an additional $2,500 deposit down when they tell us to do the survey. That would go towards the purchase price, but be non-refundable, and then if they close on the property, then they would reimburse us for the cost of the study. The idea there is that if they don't close, then they'll have subsidized our study by $2,500, but we are obviously the beneficiary of the study at that point, if they don't, if they don't close. And then, we would simply maintain the grounds as we are mowing and things like that, but we would have no obligation to make any repairs, maintenance to the building. The appraisal that we commissioned through Northridge came back at $20,000. What we did was, I asked him to appraise the property as vacant land, and we talked about this at the commission meeting as far as how the appraisal would go for it, but it was vacant land and with the structure on it. His recommendation was, and then sort of how we ended up with the result we have here is, a $200,000 appraisal as vacant land, and the appraisal notes the quotes that we, that the city received, the lower quote of $250,000. So, and we've talked about this many, many times as a commission, as far as the, we're stuck, obviously, having to dispose of that building, however, in the future at some point as far as demolishing it. And then, so for you all to discuss, is that we have a $200,000 appraisal, we, in the appraisal it mentions, and what we just talked about was the demolition cost, and we have an offer for $50,000 to purchase the property as is, so with the demolition cost.
Okay, and did you, did you, you know, I'm thinking about everything. You mentioned that we moved the closing date up to October 31st.
Sorry, right, closing date, good point. The closing date currently in the contract is October 31, 2020, and then those 45-day extensions would push it beyond that, at the option of fire McDowell, again, in return for $2,500 per extension, if they want to buy it.
And yes, and then, yes, okay, $2,500 non-refundable deposit per extension. $2,500 non-refundable deposit per extension. Three extensions allowed.
Yes, they would be outside of their 180-day feasibility period at that point.
And then, so basically then, we have a value of $200,000, of basically 20,000 an acre, but it's not quite 10 acres of vacant land. It's 9.65 acres. And Courtney has reached out to, for market values on Water View property in Landarc that the water sewer department owns and got a value of 30,000 an acre. But that's Water View property right there across from Buffalo where they have a wide open view. So, you know, 20, in my point of view, $20,000 an acre back near public housing already, or subsidized housing, is not a bad value. It's not a bad price.
If I could add to that, because I did some research myself. Went to the property appraiser's office and we chose about a dozen comps within the city of Caravelle. And they range anywhere from a little over 10 an acre to a little over 25 an acre in comp sales for the last six months. So that $200,000 is falling within the range of those comps within the city of Caravelle. And they're not waterfront. They're comparable to that property. And they're within the city of Caravelle.
And one other consideration is obviously the purpose of, I think, the presentation is the end result. Because obviously, this is unusual in that this is not surplus property. We're not surplusing it, but we haven't done a lot of that, but we have done some surplus property sales, personal and real. But because, you know, this is looked at, or we think by the commission, the other factor that you're looking at is what is the end use of the property? The 30 affordable housing units that you would, unlike some of the private developments we've had, where we're not sure whether it's how much of it or all of it's going to be built, obviously. And Mr. Shear could probably speak to this more. I have not researched it. But the idea that if he gets the funding and commits moving forward, I think, pair it down to build these homes. They don't get the money if they don't build the homes, so.
And then I would like to say that, you know, sometimes it's not all about the money upfront. You have to sometimes look forward to your future and to see what this can do for the future of Caravelle. This is something that cities and counties and states do all over. They work with developers and help provide affordable land. That is exactly what the Community Land Trust was doing that Commissioner Allen was referring to earlier. They find free or affordable land, and then they work with a developer to put housing on it, whether it's a ship-style housing, a stick-built mobile home. And then they can provide affordable housing. Now, I would like to say that this isn't necessarily low-income housing. This is affordable workforce housing. And Mr. Shear's presentation said that there will be 21 homes with the rent in the range of $817 a month. That is not low-income housing. And six homes with, at 817. And five homes that would be more towards the low income at $545,000. So it would be more of a mixed use. As commissioners, we need to take a look at the long-term tax revenue that 30 additional homes can bring to this city. We have, the only way to make money in the city is property taxes. We get a little bit of state revenue sharing. We get a little bit of money from gasoline tax from the state, but the gasoline tax has to be used on the roadways. We have no way to make money to give our employees raises, to improve our landscaping, to improve our parks, unless we get a grant. The Tilly Miller Park I had talked about earlier has been vandalized and vandalized. One urinal is broken out of it and another one is broken in half. We're striving to find money to replace that. New housing, new development is the only way to bring new and more money to the city. So it's an opportunity to remove the blighted building over there and soon going to become slum property because it's being vandalized as well. And it's an opportunity for us to work together and provide help to provide what's needed in this area's affordable workforce housing. And in fact, Appalachia Cola right now has an affordable work housing initiative. They meet one to two times a month with folks like the Community Land Trust and builders and state land trust holders. And Appalachia Cola has 50 vacant lots. They're not all together, so they can't be a unit. So they're going to go over there. But they are trying to work with developers now. They will make those 50 vacant lots. They will give those vacant lots free if the developer will build affordable workforce housing on that. They need it so bad over there as well. So it's not uncommon for cities to not necessarily ask for the highest price. I've been reporting this to you all for four months now that we've been communicating with Mr. Shear regarding that property. And he's been available to speak to anyone at any time. His contact number could have been gotten from Courtney, or, you know, maybe I have presented something. I know we had a narrative last month that the P&amp;Z reviewed, and then we all reviewed that as well. And speaking of the P&amp;Z, we have some P&amp;Z members here that had discussed about, they had a question about how you maintain your properties, the property management. Can you tell us about that?
Yeah, we use a third-party property manager. So there's a few options here. Royal American Management has, currently manages Caravelle Cove. And I believe there's a couple others in Franklin County that they currently manage, and we work with them on other projects, so we would likely work with them on this one as well. There's going to be an onsite property manager onsite at least during business hours. So we do have onsite management within the clubhouse. We will have a maintenance and or porter onsite as well. So the properties are kept up very well. You know, we do all of our maintenance. We'll engage with likely a local vendor to, you know, take care of the landscaping, cut the grass, trim, you know, bushes and whatnot. So that's generally something we engage a third-party. We don't do that internally. Our property management company will engage a local vendor to take care of that with the pool. We'll engage a local vendor to maintain the pool as well. But we have, you know, we have a lot of oversight on these projects because of the, you know, of the federal financing here. In this case, this loan is by virtue of the federal allocation from Hurricane Michael coming through the state. But these are federal dollars, so there is a lot of covenants that we commit to. And that keeps, you know, everybody working with highest integrity to maintain these assets.
I'll say we cut to change.
I would like to make a comment, and I'll make a motion. I think we'd be remiss not to make a counterproposal with all said. I think the project is definitely favorable. But I would like to see us make a counteroffer. I think we'd be prudent to do that. And I'd like to make a motion that we make a counteroffer of $100,000 for the purchase and a 5% non-refundable HUD.
Before we get it on the board, I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Melander for a counteroffer of $100,000 for the purchase with a 5% non-refundable deposit. And we have that seconded by Commissioner Allen. So we're ready for discussion on this proposal, this counteroffer. Yes, yes.
Hello. My name's Todd Nelson. I run a bunch of rentals in town. Kind of new on the scene, but I've been doing the kind of logistics and kind of working out how Caravelle operates, and I just have a couple of questions. What exactly, since obviously it's federal money, is there an income requirement for being a resident of these homes?
There is. There is. So there would be various set-asides, it's a mix of incomes. There's going to be 30% area median income units. So every year HUD provides each county with the area median income. And so 30% of that, the quick math is you should only be spending 30% of your disposable income on housing. So if the area median income, we're using round numbers, $100,000, it would be $30,000 a year is the maximum that you would be spending on housing. Or sorry, $30,000, or $30,000. And then divide that by 12 for a monthly rental rate. So there is a maximum. That's the basic calculation that they use. So there'll be 30% AMI units. There will be 60% AMI units. And there may even be a few unrestricted units.
Okay. Do you know what the current average annual salary is for people in this area?
I believe it's about 30, the area median income was about $38,000, I believe.
I guess from my experience and my rentals, I usually come down. I can't, I've tried going in that 800 realm, and I'm very, I'm very, wouldn't say restricted, I go with the basic guidelines of how rentals are rented. This is actually my property manager as well, works over there at Seacrest. But we have a big problem with drugs and petty crime and stuff like that. And a lot of people aren't working these days. And you, big problem of getting my properties, you know, wrecked if you don't stick to the basic standard guidelines. I mean, it's pretty high. We have a $1,000 security deposit. That's standard over there at Seacrest. But I have to go down on the rent just because people can't afford that $800. I'm usually running $600, $650, and we go in and we completely gut them and completely redo them from the ground up, new electrical, new plumbing, everything like that.
Those are two bedrooms generally?
Two bedrooms, or more, yeah. But from my understanding, this is not an official study, but, I mean, I do take note of everything, the income level seems to be more closer to around the mid-20s.
Now, that is county level, so Caravelle itself.
Caravelle itself, yeah.
Maybe a little bit lower.
That, and it's been extremely difficult to find anybody to work. You know, I mean, I mostly do all the work myself. And it's, and I guess the reason I'm asking these questions is, we see, we have all these project developments that are still vacant. I mean, I just probably, what, a dozen subdivisions that are completely unbuilt. The land, the water taps, the sewer taps, the electric taps are all there. They can all be had for, I mean, usually I ask them to run at $8,000 a lot per building site. But you could be, I mean, I've been offered them for, you know, less than four. And I guess my real question is, knowing that you can buy the entire subdivision for, basically, will you be at demolishing this building with that $250,000 demolition along with a land purchase? What exactly makes this property so appealing over buying already communityized subdivision?
So we are, we are under contract to purchase, and we have funding allocated for Jordan Bayou, 60-platted lot subdivision. That subdivision was of interest because we could buy the entire thing. Our financing, because of the restrictions, because of potential crime issues, we prefer to have some control over the site. So buying sporadic lots within a community, even though if I could get 30, which is the maximum number of units that I can build under this financing, but they're not all together and they're scattered throughout. And I got individual homes between us that I don't have any control over. And there's an HOA over that. It becomes problematic. The HOA is an issue as well. We're dissolving that at Jordan Bayou. The financing doesn't really work with the HOA because that brings in a whole other layer of responsibility. And really, the lenders want to know that the owner is able to make these covenants, not an association, which could change from time to time and does over periods of time. So that's the issues with subdivisions. I completely understand and agree with you in terms of the tapings being paid and the infrastructure being done. That is very appealing. It allows us to get in frankly much faster than we otherwise have to do when we're developing a site from the ground up. But unfortunately, I haven't come across any similar to Jordan Bayou where I could purchase the entire subdivision where it was of size to make sense for my financing.
There's a little bit of, you know, talking around town. You could get contacts with those, and I could give you contacts to a couple of the subdivisions that pretty, for the most part, are privately owned. But I guess my fear is we have so many of these and they're so vacant, and it really, it really affects when people come into town and they see all these vacant subdivisions. People ask why. And nobody really understands, and obviously, the price of building here is so much higher. And it's hard just to get anything done in this town because, you know, materials have to be brought in from big cities. And I would hate to see another failed development or even a development that was completely built but just sit there empty because there's nobody to live there, or they couldn't afford it, or, and eventually end up being places that were broken in by my children or, you know, people that are on hard times and, you know, sticking around and needed a place to stay or whatever. I think, and, you know, I buy property around here all the time, and at $50,000, even $100,000, I think the city, who's in a growing state, really needs to hold on to some property for growing pains. There's more than enough. I would say, I don't know. I mean, if I were to take a wild guess, at least 30% of the town is decrepit properties that, I mean, I focus on buying decrepit properties with emphasis on known drug houses, stuff like that, to rehabilitate all that. But I know that Caravelle's residential program, and I would be interested in, you know, talking to you about this and either sharing my experiences and maybe helping you guys out or assisting in any way I can. There's, we have lots more to fix before we start jumping into the range of income levels that we don't really have here yet. Not, at least in mass roads, you know, I mean, people are just struggling to make the rents to begin with.
Okay. We thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I would ask you, sir, please, sometime if you could get a chance with the warden and go out and speak with him, who's short 80 employees right now and has described to Ms. Courtney and myself the reason that they don't have employees is because they cannot find affordable workforce housing. And they don't want to travel here from Tallahassee or Bluntstown or somewhere like that. Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to follow up, and I really appreciate your comments. And I think you have a valid point. But I also think there's a need for this proposal that Mr. Shear.
Shear.
I'm going to call you Shear. Shear. I think we have a valid need there for moderate income as the mayor's described, with our school teachers, with our law enforcement, with FWC, with DOC, with forestry. There's a need, and it's an upscale. But I also made that motion because I think that's a reasonable request in the purchase and looking at all the elements of what we've discussed here. That's reasonable. Counteroffer is the reason why I made that proposal. I am definitely in agreement with your project. But I think that's a very reasonable counteroffer, and that's the reason why I made that motion.
And I do want to say that would you also go out and see the Franklin County School Board Superintendent? She will tell you the same thing. Her and her husband buy properties so that they can develop them as rental properties because they are dying out there for teachers. They do not have teachers because the teachers do not have anywhere to live in Franklin County. And that type housing is in need. And I would ask Mr. Hartman, you have touched on this briefly with myself, pre-platted, a pre-platted community versus a planned community like we see now. There's a difference there, and there's, it makes it more. There's a difference there, and there's, it makes it more appealing for a developer like the proposed development that Mr. Shear has.
Well, sort of to address that, just so, I mean, and I'm not sure this is exactly what you're talking about, but the difference between, and this doesn't apply to Jordan Bayou because those are platted lots, sixty-platted lots, this site is, what they would receive is not a plat, it's a development order. So it is all one site, thirty homes on that site, under one common ownership, the people who are renting them are just renting them. So these are not individual homes. Exactly, it's like, I mean, and this is where it gets confusing because I've gone around and around, it's like an apartment complex, right? But it just happens to be single-family homes, thirty of them. So it's one single very, let's say, you know, more valuable development, more property value there. And again, the idea of, you know, as amenities and everything else, but it's a single development, it's not platted lots, so.
And just add a couple of things to address the final comments that you'd have. We looked at the City Hall site because we wanted to, we think it would be a good opportunity for the city to do something with the property. We initially looked at how we could repurpose it and use the existing building, and it quickly became clear it's not set up and laid out efficiently for us to be able to do that. And so we thought this would be a good opportunity to, you know, kill a couple of birds here in terms of getting a new quality, affordable housing development done and taking care of an issue for the city. So that's really why we focused on this parcel.
And the issue is desperate, and I would be glad to show you that building. And the city, at this point, cannot afford to demolish it, and it's being, like I said, being vandalized routinely. Before we built this building, we had quotes for a new roof, and I've got drone pictures on my phone, I can show you after the meeting, of the roof, and the quotes ran from five-hundred thousand to seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand to replace the roof. The quotes, the staff worked for three years until we could come to terms on whether or not we wanted to stay there, or tear down and build there, or find another location to build. For three years, the staff worked without heating and air. To replace the heating and air system in that nineteen-seventy-two building was running about two-fifty to three-hundred thousand dollars. And then we still had, you know, poor windows and, you know, it's just in disrepair throughout. Built in nineteen-seventy-two, and the school board did not keep it maintained. So, and this is, like I say, it's a long-term opportunity to have additional development in our city limits to earn additional ad valorem property tax than being put back out into the community. The city is a nonprofit, it can't make money, tax money, and not spend it. Tax money has to be spent on employees who may go out, who would go out into the community and maybe rent one of those houses, buy food at the IGA, eat at fathoms. You know, so it's just, you know, and I feel like it's a good opportunity for the city to be able to take care of that blighted eyesore over there and look at long-term income taxable property taxes for the city. And I just, you know, I don't know what else to say.
Mayor, may I add a couple of comments here? Commissioner, the price of the building, I will pay whatever we can support. So it comes down to a matter of sources and uses. I have only so much money that I can borrow against that rental revenue that I'm going to generate, and I only have so much that I'm going to give for the city. So if I can find a demolition bid that comes in fifty thousand dollars lower and I make up for that, I am more than happy to pay the additional fifty thousand dollars to the city. So I don't know if we could consider having kind of a skewed purchase agreement in terms of pricing, I'm not sure how that would look in contract, but depending on what that final demolition price is, like that's ultimately what's going to dictate whether I can support the cost of living.
And actually, that's part of your feasibility study, so we know, we all have enough sense to know that if McDowell Housing Property does not secure that loan from the state, they won't be building that project, they won't be demoing it. And also, if they do a feasibility study and learn that, yes, it is going to cost two-fifty for the demo, and it's going to be another hundred-and-fifty or a hundred for asbestos, I mean, we don't know, that's an unknown. So they may decide that they can't do the project at all. And so we're not at risk at this point. I believe the only thing that we have at risk is the time that we withhold the property in limbo until...
October.
Yes, sir, October of next year. And then the, our portion, about half of what the asbestos survey would cost. And we have to have an asbestos survey if we make any movement on that property because we're government, and we're not private individuals, and we can't sneak and do something without permitting. Everything has to be above the table.
Let me suggest something, because this is, obviously, we have other agenda items or anything that's going to fall behind whether or not we build in our contract.
Right.
So from what Mr. Shear's saying, and what the commission's talking about here, is certainly written some wild contracts before, and this wouldn't be that unusual, really. It would be an additional term to the effect that we assume a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar demolition cost, right? And if the demolition cost is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or more, that the purchase price will be fifty thousand dollars. If it is less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, down to, I don't want to get more complicated, down to two-hundred thousand dollars, the purchase price will increase by that increment. Now, if they could get it done for a hundred thousand dollars, and it would still only be a hundred thousand dollars that they would pay, but it will slide down, and it's something we had talked about, is, you know, the city obviously has a vested interest in getting that property cleaned up, just any which way, because it's our responsibility until it is cleaned up, or as long as, during the period we own it, certainly. But it would obviously incentivize us as well to talk to the county, talk to landfill, talk to Waco County, and talk to just who can help us out on getting that demolition cost down that would also help the potential purchaser and that sort of thing. But I could certainly draft language to that effect, pretty simply, a couple sentences would do that, to where we would, we'd have, you know, fifty thousand dollars, again, if the demolition cost is two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or more, then they would pay fifty thousand dollars, and however much more is, you know, there would be, and of course, we'd still help, but who knows what it'll be, given the asbestos survey. But then, from two-hundred-and-fifty down to two-hundred, literally, any savings in that, in that zone, two-fifty to two-hundred, would add to the sale price.
All right, I have a little idea here. I think we need to go ahead and deal with this motion that's on the table. I think then, after we deal with this motion on the table, I think that we need to take a recess, and this is not unheard of, let you help us draft a motion that would include that contingency, that we would possibly make after we take a little five-minute recess.
Okay.
Does that seem all right with you all?
Yes.
All right. So then, we have this motion, but we're also considering another motion. So we have this motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Allen, at a one-hundred-thousand-dollar counteroffer to purchase with a five percent non-refundable deposit. Now, if we're going to consider another motion, we need to make sure we're understanding how we're going to vote on this motion. Do we understand?
Understand.
You don't?
I agree with what the attorney's saying. If it comes in under two-hundred-and-fifty, then the price goes up. If it goes over, then we stick with fifty thousand.
Mayor can simplify this for you.
Okay, let's do that.
I withdraw my motion.
All right.
Because I am, I am kind of in favor of where we're going with it, but I still feel like a counteroffer is fair with all that said. But I'll withdraw my motion, and we'll see what the attorney comes up with.
All right, now let me ask Commissioner Allen.
I will withdraw my second.
I wish y'all had done that before I got this finished. Yes. All right, so, all right, what we're going to do then, do you have any questions, Mr. Sullivan?
No, I don't have any.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay. How about Mr. Magnin?
Nothing.
Okay, and the two ladies, Ms. Patty Lee and Ms. Susan.
I'm good, I'm just listening.
All right. Okay.
Thanks, good idea, mayor.
All right, then we're going to take a little recess and let Mr. Hartman draft a motion because we have other items on this agenda that pertain to this item, and we have, and a timeline as well, between now and October, so let's just take a short break and we'll take a tithing order. To reconvene here on September the fifth, twenty nineteen, our city commission meeting here at Carabelle City Hall, we took a break while the attorney composed a motion for us. So we want to move forward with that motion now, and you will read this motion for us, and how will we, who will be proposing this motion, but you're going to read it for us.
I'll make a motion to oppose the attorney's motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All right, okay, let's hear you motion, sir.
Okay. The motion would be to approve the contract that has been presented with an additional term, and the additional term would be, the changes to the contract would be that in section two, the purchase price, there would be an asterisk, and it would say, "See additional terms." And then, in the additional terms section eighteen, would contain this additional term. Purchase price shall remain at fifty thousand dollars if demolition costs are two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars or greater, period. In the event the demolition cost is less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, the purchase price will increase on a dollar-per-dollar basis based upon any decrease in demolition cost between two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and two-hundred-thousand dollars, period.
Okay, thank you for reading that. So we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, and a second by Commissioner Mathis. Now, is there discussion? Is there discussion by these commission members? Is there discussion from the audience? And I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And then, one additional motion would be just to authorize...
That motion carries. Okay, okay, then we need another motion.
Just to authorize a signatory on the contract. We'll get it, obviously, the contract revised, it meets the terms that we just discussed, and we could authorize one of the commissioners or the mayor to execute the contract.
My motion to authorize the mayor's signature of the contract as completed.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Melander to authorize the signatory on the contract as the mayor, and that is second by Commissioner Allen. Is there discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Is there anything else on this item? Anything else on this agenda item? All right, then, we'll move forward to item two, discussion of possible action concerning the conceptual site plan approval for the former City Hall site, nine-point-six-five acres, as presented by Representative McDowell Housing. And Mr. Shear did present the conceptual, this is a conceptual, and Keisha, tell us the order that these site plans go. You have a conceptual, then, that would come back with a final, or...
Preliminary.
Preliminary and then a final.
Preliminary, then final.
So this is just to give us an idea of how...
Right, preliminary will be the set in stone.
Okay. How did the, how did the planning and zoning vote to recommend to this board for this conceptual site plan?
They voted, they recommended approval.
They recommended approval. All right, then.
Mike, what was your take for it?
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis to approve this conceptual site plan as presented.
Second.
Okay, and a second by Commissioner Allen. Is there discussion? Any discussion from the public? Any discussion by the commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. All right, then, okay, we'll move on to item three, and then we will be reading an ordinance proposal at the end of this meeting that also pertains to the zoning in that area. Item three, resilience presentation by John Conkuss and Mr. Bill Colonia on behalf of AECOM. And this is a resilience presentation, and we're glad you're still here with us. Thank you, sir.
Yes, mayor and commission, good evening. Thank you very much. My name is John Conkuss, I'm a senior manager for business development at AECOM. I work out of our Tallahassee office. I'll give you a brief introduction to AECOM, and then allow two of my colleagues to speak with you about their roles at our company. AECOM is a global network of experts delivering clean water, energy, planning new cities, restoring damaged environments, connecting people and economies with roads, bridges, tunnels, transit systems, and designing parks where children play. At AECOM, we design, build, finance, operate, and manage projects and programs that unlock opportunities, protect our environment, and improve people's lives. We have offices and thousands of employees all across the state of Florida. We work with the state of Florida itself and with dozens of municipal governments. Joining me today are two of my Florida, are two of our Florida experts, who will share a little bit about their insights with you. First is Bill Colonia, Bill is a scientist and a geologist who has worked with AECOM. I know for decades, I think it's been twenty-eight years now, and understands the local impact of our work. Bill lives in Waco County. And also, we'll hear from Lawrence Swan, who is one of AECOM's resilience experts, who has worked with many Florida municipalities, many Florida coalitions and defense installations in the state, helping communities understand, plan for, and achieve sustainability. AECOM and these experts that you'll hear from this evening would like to be an asset to the city of Carabelle as you continue your work, making your coastal community more resilient. Thank you very much, and now I'll have Bill Colonia speak a little bit. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm there.
Hi.
Commissioners here. As John said, I work with AECOM, I've been in the Tallahassee office for twenty-eight years, and I've had the pleasure of living in Waco and not leaving on county for those twenty-eight years. It's a changing community, and I've seen a lot of things, same thing here in Franklin County, probably was when I first came to school here in Tallahassee in the late seventies and ended up living here, raising my family in Waco. I've got two kids, both K through twelve graduates and going to college right now. So I feel like I'm not a Franklin County resident, but I feel like I'm part of the coastal community here, and I think the reason, the biggest thing I've got to offer you is a local resource and a lot of experience working in a lot of different aspects of resiliency, which is, I guess, one of the main reasons we're here. But also, I've been listening this evening, economic opportunity, Mr. Barber was talking about it, I don't know if he's still here or not, yeah. I've worked with St. Mark's, it's been years ago, but I've worked with Chuck Shields and Ken Williams, doing some of the economic studies that they were hoping to come to fruition for waterfront development and for eco-tourism there in St. Mark's in Waco County. Something that's near and dear to me, I'm a Florida master naturalist and attended the Living Seashore Program over in Appalachia Cola that the Florida IFAS UF program gives for sustainability with regard to... that the Florida IFAS UF program gives for sustainability with regard to oyster harvesting and shrimping and so forth. So, you know, I've got a good interest in the natural resources of our area. As John said, I'm a professional geologist, licensed geologist here. So, I do a lot of work with water resource planning and preservation specifically. I live less than three miles from Wacola Springs, so water resources are important to me. So that's, that's it, I've done a lot of things in my career here, I've worked for the state. Been, like I said, with AECOM for 28 years now. And what I've got to offer is a point of contact, a local point of contact where people got questions. If you have questions or people here in the community, you can reach out and know that there's somebody close by. I don't have a problem, it takes 30 minutes for my house to get here and come and talk, so I'm a readily available resource. I think that with regard to resiliency, I do do environmental stuff, Ms. Swan is more in the community aspect of resiliency. But I don't want to just confine it to resiliency. The one thing that I can help offer you is support in a lot of different things, economic opportunity. We do work with the Appalachia Regional Planning Council occasionally, so we're familiar with them, the territory that they serve. I know that McKesson Beach has got a grant that has been awarded to the city. And I think that there's some, a land management plan that has to be developed. I think that could be an important part of some of the revitalization, and also the resiliency that the community is looking for. So, I'm familiar with those types of things and those types of projects. We have a large transportation department in Tallahassee. Just anything to do with DOT and Florida turnpike, we manage a lot of the turnpikes work ourselves. And airport work, I listened to Mrs. Sutherland talking about the airport here in town. I know that good fuel is an essential thing for an airplane, but I'm glad to see that DOT's taken an interest in supplementing and helping out with that. We've done work over there in Appalachia with the airport authority there as well. I heard earlier some talk about work in St. Joe. And of course, Preble Rish is a company that's known very well in this area. We've worked and met with Ralph Rish here very recently on some things we're working on over in St. Joe, Port of St. Joe, and Appalachia as well. So, I guess the thing that I've got to offer up to y'all is just a point of contact. I believe John's given Ms. LaPaz some business cards, or he will if he has not already, so.
Can we on, Charles here?
Yeah, I'm sure you do. We get a nickel for each one, so. So that's it, if anybody has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them about anything. Like I said, I've got a long career in the area. And if there's questions, I'll be happy to take them, if not, I'll turn it over to Ms. Swan.
Okay, well, we thank you very much, a pleasure to meet you. Thank you, Mr. Colonia.
Hi.
Hi.
Lawrence Swan with AECOM, I am Miami-based, however, I work all over the southeast. There are two things that we really like to talk about and focus on with resilience. One is climate resilience, which is some of the environmental work that Bill is an expert in, and also community resilience. Because what is a city without its people, right? So, something we really like to focus on is pre-planning for post-recovery. You know, as recent as this week, we've seen some of the impacts that our environment can have on our communities. So thinking about what those impacts could be on your community, what are your vulnerabilities, and what are some of the opportunities? So how do you manage that risk of your existing assets and then plan your community to be able to mitigate and adapt from that? So, what's, what's really interesting about understanding your vulnerabilities is you can understand which homes, which facilities, which roads, which utilities, where you need to harden and adapt with what you already have built, and it can help you better prepare and plan your community for the future. So as, as you think about new development, are you developing in the right places? Are these places that are going to be in the safest spots from some of the hurricanes or some of these flood events? And so we like to work with the community and historical data to understand, you know, what past events have done, and then also work with our future projections of 100 or 500-year storms to understand what, what event could look like and how to better plan for that. So those are some of the offerings that we have at AECOM, so we just wanted to meet with y'all today. So we want to thank you for having us, and if you have any questions, we're available tonight and also later on, so.
Alright, well, thank you very much. Do you all have any questions at this time?
Thank you.
Okay, we appreciate it, thank you for coming to Carabelle and joining in our, our meeting tonight.
Thanks for having us.
It's nice to meet you and see you all. Does the, does the, the public have any questions for these folks at this point? Okay. Then we'll move on to our final item, no, we've got to down the ordinance as well. But Item 4, and this is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding Hiring a Full-Time Police Officer. And the chief's gonna speak to us briefly. Chief Gary Hunnies, thank you for staying with us, Gary, we appreciate it, chief.
You're welcome. Good evening, Commissioners. Y'all are aware, we've had a big turnover in our department lately. About two weeks ago, I hired a gentleman, he got about nine years' experience, I believe I hired him as a part-time officer. I'm asking y'all tonight to give me approval to switch him to a full-time position.
And I don't see a problem with it, you've already done all the background checks, he's got nine years to-
Already done all the background checks, he's approved through FDLE.
Make a motion by Commissioner Mathis.
Okay.
Kevin Schuman.
Kevin Schuman? Okay. Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Mathis to hire Kevin Schuman, or he's part-time?
He's part-time now.
Okay, but, okay, then to move him to, move Kevin Schuman to full-time. And we have that by Commissioner Mathis, seconded by Commissioner Allen. Okay then, is there any discussion? Discussion, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, and then that motion carries. And then I'm just gonna say briefly here and move us into another conversation, and I have talked with the attorney, you know, if we could go ahead and discuss some police items that are pressing at this time, and he said, yes, we can. And as the chief has pointed out, the CPD is short-staffed. And one of the major reasons for that is that the current CPD administrative policy reads officers cannot reside more than 16-mile-
Fifteen.
Fifteen-mile, fifteen-mile, and that's right, you sent me the paper, I didn't change it on my notes. More than a 15-mile radius from the city limits. And the chief is having a difficult time filling his positions because we just don't have officers that live in this area within 15-mile radius of Carabelle, and you can't count the south because that's water, so, you know, we don't have a full 15-mile radius. And there, there's just, you know, there's no housing in the first place to have, have folks live here that would be qualified to work. So, the chief is requesting to increase that radius to 25 miles. And he would like to modify his administrative police department plan to include that. And, you know, we're looking for a motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
Sir, that's good, ask questions.
Well, chief and I had a discussion, it's just my, my view. He is having some trying times, if you will, filling vacancies, but his department's not the only one. It's, it's happening all over with police officers. And I feel like that the 15-mile limit is, that's beyond what we allow other employees to drive city-owned vehicles. And I feel like that's reasonable, the 15 miles. And I don't want to choke him, he, he understands it, he and I talked about it. But I feel like that that's very adequate, driving city-owned vehicles to your own home. And I'm really not in favor of extending it myself, but that's my feeling, and because again, we don't, our other city employees are not allowed to drive 15 miles with their vehicles.
Do we have a policy like that for the other city employees?
I don't know if we do or not, we have a few that live further out if you know.
And I know that we don't allow them to go out of the county, I know that, with the county, with the city vehicles, I do know that.
And one thing with our guys that's different from the other city employees, the other city employees are not responding to emergencies, if we do have an emergency.
And I agree with that statement, however, I'll counter that by the fact that very seldom do you call a police officer out of East Point or Appalachia Cola to respond to an issue in Carabelle.
I agree with that, but when you do need it, you know, and they do have to respond.
That's far and in-between, but that's my opinion.
Okay, so, and I would like to kind of get this sorted out here. The, right now, the policy reads that you can't hire someone if they live more than 15 miles out.
Right.
Yep.
And doesn't necessarily, we're not necessarily giving the vehicle on that, but we, we want to certainly be able to increase the radius in being able to hire someone, but then the vehicle comes into play.
Now, I don't have a problem, I really don't have a problem if we hire a police officer who lives in the city of Tallahassee, but not drive the city vehicle back and forth.
Well, I do know that we have a policy, I don't know if it's written or not, that we don't allow them, take them out, take city vehicles out of the county, unless they're on business.
I was just using that as an analogy.
I understand.
And we talked about that. Yeah, if he's constrained to 15 miles to hire someone, I would support changing that mileage to increase for him to hire someone, but not allow them to drive that city vehicle no more than what's, what we're currently at. I actually think it's too far, but that's just, I, I'm good with that.
Alright, do we have input from other commissioners?
Yeah, I do, I got-
Okay.
I'm like, I don't care where they live, they show up to work, that's all that matters. But the 15-mile, I agree with Tony, I think that should be a limit on what we allow our police vehicles to be driven. That's, so if you want to hire somebody that works in Tallahassee, they show up to work on time, I don't see a problem with that. And I don't think he should be able to drive our city-owned vehicles to Tallahassee, but-
I agree with that.
And I agree with that too, and I would never ask y'all to stretch it out that far.
Do they, can they drive their own vehicle down if they were in Tallahassee for exactly?
Sure, I've got a part-time right now.
They'd be fine.
That's living in Tallahassee, drive down here, and it's covering one of our full-time shifts, I've got two more shifts that, that need to be covered. And he's driving down here now.
Yeah, I thought we were just addressing the use of the cars. But again, I told the chief the other day when he and I had the conversation, and I just used Tallahassee as an analogy. I know they can live 30 miles, 40 miles, 50 miles from the city of Carabelle, and I don't have a problem with hiring them as a police officer, but not driving that city vehicle.
Okay, with the policy, we'll just deal with the policy right here for a minute. It reads that the officers, see, I have the policy. Yeah, full-time officers who live within the city of Carabelle limits are no further than 15 road miles, taking the shortest route possible, using available road to get here.
So that, that calls for a policy, I mean, Mr. Attorney?
Yeah, and, and, you know, and we are talking out of an order, because that's what I, when I talk to the mayor, that's the policy, the hiring policy, not the vehicle policy.
Right.
And then we can, we can certainly address the vehicle policy as well.
It may not need to, I mean, it sounds like the vehicle policy.
Well, that's, that's what he said, and again, I understood, maybe I misunderstood. Anyway, I would support, and just as I told you the other day, I would support amending that policy to extend it to reach out as far as he needs to for a law officer, but they will drive their own vehicle to their work site.
I'd say just leave the restriction on the vehicles, let people, if they want to drive down.
Would that be happy?
Just lift the restriction on it.
I'll take whatever y'all give.
Alright, so, then we're gonna, okay, so we want to amend the policy then to-
I would say just lift the distance restriction on hiring.
Okay, lift the distance restriction on hiring.
Hiring.
And then, but keep the distance restriction on the use of city vehicles.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Alright.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, and a second by Commissioner Walden.
Now, do we have to advertise the thing?
The-
Policy change?
No.
It's administrative policy.
Internal policy change, yeah.
So there, is there any discussion?
Any, any discussion on this item?
Well, since we passed it, alright, go ahead.
Let's go.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries. And then, chief, I think it's good for you to ask about his two part-time officers.
We've got two other part-time officers that are willing to take two other full-time positions. One of them lives in Tallahassee, that's willing to drive his vehicle here. And I would ask to have him approve to fill one of the part, the full-time positions.
Did you want to, are you asking, do you want to go and have both of them approved?
And the other one is sitting back here in the back of the room, he lives in Appalachia Cola, that's willing to take another position. I'm not sure, we talked about it a little bit, about him having a take-home vehicle, I'm not sure if he's willing to do that. And we may even can talk about it on a get-shave.
Okay, so he's not ready at this time? Okay. Alright, so-
But if we can approve John D. M. Bruglio to be moved to a, from a part-time position to a full-time position?
I make a motion that you move that person up to the full-time position.
I can.
Okay, we have that commissioner, that motion by Commissioner Allen, to move Mr. D. M. Bruglio to, from part-time to full-time, seconded by Commissioner Mathis. Any, any more discussion?
Just to ask, chief, chief, you're good with that, you recommend that.
Yes, sir.
And, and the reason why I ask is, is if, I feel like we're rushing into things, and I don't want you to rush into something that's not gonna be right. But I just asked that question, if you're good with it, I'll go with your recommendation.
Okay, I'll do it.
How do you feel, Commissioner, Police Department Commissioner?
I feel very confident in our chief's decision, whatever he makes, I'll back him up.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
He runs that department.
And I agree with Commissioner Allen, thank you, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, alright, so wait now, let's vote. All in favor of moving D. M. Bruglio to full-time? Any opposed? Okay, then that motion carries, and we hope we can work something out with our police officer from Appalachia. What's that now?
Um, we're gonna talk about that later.
Alright then.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Alright, thank you, sir. We have no hold business, so we're gonna go ahead and move forward to the ordinance 474, first reading of that, and there's no action.
No action required, this is ordinance 474, it's an ordinance of the city of Carabelle, providing for the amendment of ordinance 455 of the city land use regulation, providing, and the fact, providing on permitted conditional prohibited uses within the public use zoning district, providing for appealed ordinances or efforts thereof in conflict here with, to the extent of such conflict, providing for severability and establishing effective date. And the purpose of this ordinance, or this accomplishes, is it removes two footnotes from the land use, permitted use table that would allow the residential use proposed by McDowell Housing on the city property. But it would obviously apply regardless of what happens with the McDowell Housing contract.
To all of that area there, the school board-
9365.
For instance, I'm understanding that the school board is wanting to offer up the football field area for affordable housing because they're in such need of school teachers, so, but we'll see how that plays out. So there's no, no action on this, and there is a timeline to this thing, as Mr. Commissioner Mathis reminded me of earlier. And because of that timeline, we're gonna need to hold a special meeting that Keisha mentioned earlier, on September the 23rd. This will be right before our, for our final budget hearing, our second reading on our budget hearing. And on this set, a special meeting, just like we held the CRA meeting today, we'll have the second reading of this ordinance that we just read, and then we will have discussion of possible action regarding the special exception that pertains to the zoning there. regarding the special exception that pertains to the zoning there at the old school site.
Four thirty?
So, well, what time do you suggest, Ms. Keisha, to have the meeting?
4:30.
Okay.
Well, we meet at 5:00, the budget hearing, so we shouldn't need more than 30 minutes.
Yeah, and we really can't change that budget hearing time.
Right.
That's advertised. So 4:30 special exception. And that special exception has already been to planning and zoning, so we can review the recommendation at that time as well.
What date is that?
The 23rd.
23rd.
All right, then. Can we have a-
Did you put two or four?
All right. Then we need a motion for a special meeting on September 23rd at 4:30 to discuss these two items we just reviewed.
I make a motion to have a special meeting on September 23rd to discuss these two items.
All right, we have that motion by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Walden. Mr. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Being no further business, I want a motion to adjourn. Sorry, I'm going spaghetti.
A motion will adjourn?
Okay.